...everyone for making your way to your seats. So, excuse me, this gathering isn't a congregational meeting. We did not ask you to come together to vote on anything. What we invited you to be here for is to hear the latest from our council and staff's research into ideas for how we make Ascension Lutheran Church sustainable for long-term Word and Sacrament ministry. And let me begin by providing a little bit of context. There have been several studies recently, over the last, say, five to 10 years, that have begun to confirm a hunch that we in America have been having in our religious communities for some time. And the hunch is that the patterns of religious participation and observance are changing. They are changing around us. We have more and more people who no longer identify as particularly religious, and more and more people who specifically say, "I do not belong in any way, shape, or form, even in my own personal convictions, to any kind of faith," whether it be a faith community or faith as a system of belief. That is growing, and the church has finally paid attention to it. We have always assumed that youngsters would get married and have babies, and then all of that Sunday School programming would kick in again, and they would start coming back as they move through those life transitions. And one of the great challenges that the church has come to realize is that process is not happening the way it used to happen. That we are not only as a denomination, and quite frankly, as Christianity, skewing older, but there seem to be fewer and fewer people who are interested in participation in religious community that come after us. And so that prompted, all of those little studies came together to prompt our denomination, the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America, to do something that is as close to a primal scream as a staid and proper Protestant bureaucracy ever comes. They said, "Boys and girls of the church, whatever institution that you are a part of, whether you are part of the churchwide headquarters in Chicago, or you are a part of one of our universities, or a part of one of our seminaries, or you are in a local synod office with the local bishop, or you are in a local congregation, you, each and every one of you, wherever you may find yourself in the church, must find a way, in the name of Jesus, and using the creativity of your own people, you must find a way to make your ministry sustainable, to create a version of your ministry that can endure what is probably right around the corner for us demographically." I'm sorry about the puffing. We have heard that call as clergy through our local bishop pretty consistently now for the last several years. It's especially challenging on this territory because when Lutherans expanded in the West after World War II, we built congregations that reminded us of our congregations back home, where there was a little congregation for every village. And so what we did is we made a bunch of small congregations across the territory instead of several larger congregations. For example, if you Google Presbyterian churches, Scottsdale, six or seven congregations pop up. If you Google Lutheran churches, Scottsdale, there's like 18 churches that pop up. And it's not because Lutherans are significantly a larger part of the community, it's just we had this preference for these smaller neighborhood-style congregations as opposed to medium- and large-size regional congregations. That challenge, then, to find our sustainability threshold for the long term, comes to our congregations in kind of a particular way. In part, it means that we have to constantly be thinking about ways not just to raise our income, but to lower our overhead. That's going to be important for us, and many of our sister congregations have discovered that sustainability threshold. They tend to be in smaller facilities. They tend to, we have a few that have large debt loads, but they're able to service them at the moment, but smaller facilities that are cheaper to own and to operate. The two congregations on this territory that are in the trickiest position are Prince of Peace in Arcadia and Ascension right here in Paradise Valley. Both of those congregations just have one big room, and it's kind of built like the old movie palaces, where everybody was going to sit in the room at the same time to watch the same show. We had no idea, as we built some of these larger church versions of the movie palace, that patterns of religious attendance were going to shift so dramatically towards many services and different styles, and it just so happened that those in smaller facilities have figured that out and have kind of stumbled into that. I don't think that they intended for that to happen, but it's how things shook out. Prince of Peace is, you know, in a relatively strong position because they have an amazing preschool that actually earns the congregation a significant amount of money and helps to insulate the congregation against some of the ups and downs, the vagaries of participation and financial giving. We have always relied on an extremely generous core of folks who allow us the ability in the wiggle room to operate out of this space, even if there's only a few of us here. But we also have to figure out, okay, even though things are good, they're really good right now, the finances are strong, the congregation is growing, things are really good right now, so I don't mean to take away from that. It's just we have to work together to figure out how do we sustain this, not just for ourselves, but for those who come next. We spend approximately $150,000 of our annual budget on just owning and operating this facility. And I would make the case that the facility is so large and so needy, it's very, the building is very demanding of us, needs lots of attention, that it would be almost impossible to own and operate this facility without a full-time administrator. I am, but I don't think of myself as the most important staff person. Tom Mueller is the most important staff person because he keeps the place from collapsing around us with untold numbers of chewing gum and duct tape and all sorts of miracles that Tom is able to pull off. So that means really, just to have this building and have it run in a decent way is like $200,000 a year. And I can tell you, if, I don't know who the households are, but all it would take are four or five of our households to move or to go through some sort of life transition, and we would suddenly be in a very tricky situation where we would not be able to maintain our current budget. That's not to say that people couldn't step up to the plate, but the plate is really big. So then, the groundwork for this conversation is, how do we, as the Ascension family, create a version of ourselves that is sustainable for the long term, so that we are prepared for the worst-case scenario, should that happen? And we are also prepared to be, have the wiggle room to reengage in mission out in our culture, because that will be a big part. The church has told us, those who survive what is coming are going to be entrusted with unbelievable resources from the larger life of the church to be able to launch re-evangelization of our context, and also to be able to create an unbelievable machine for charity that will help to plug some of the holes in the social safety net that we, I mean, whatever side of the aisle you may find yourself, not this aisle, but you know what I mean, we all have some sense that the social safety net is going to be changing, and it's a golden opportunity for the church to step up and be able to be a part of plugging that. So all of that is what has gone into the deliberations of our council and our staff to research what are the ways, then, that Ascension could be structured so that we are sustainable for the long term, that we are prepared for the worst case, and give ourselves the wiggle room for the best-case scenario. So Mac is going to run through some slides to present those options. We're not really, like I said, we're not voting, it's just we wanted to get the information out to you so that we have grist for our congregation's conversation over the coming months, and so that there will come a point in the not-so-distant future when our congregation chooses an option. And then we'll make sure that everything we do moves towards the option that has been selected, so that we don't invest in something that is not going to be needful for what the congregation has decided it's going to do to achieve its sustainability threshold for the long term. You with me? Okay, so Brother Mac, come on up, and Mac will run through the options.
Good morning, everybody. Now, before I run through the options, can you hear me all? Everybody hear me? Now, can you hear me? Now, hello? Okay. Can you hear me yet? Okay, you can hear. I want to carry on a little bit about what Ryan had to say. I'm gonna, okay. I gotta talk like this? Ron, you didn't have to talk like this. Okay. Now that we got the technicalities out of the way. I want to add a little bit about what Ryan has to say because this isn't new, what we're talking about. I can track all the way back to the year 2000 and see that our church was facing the same problem, but at that time, we almost failed because at that time, we were the same size. We had the same number of members in congregation, we had the same number of members in church, but then the things changed, we lost some people, and we started going downhill. By the year 2002, we were spending more than we were taking in, and a few years later, we were at the point of having to start closing down the church. So we've been there before, and we are only now back to where we were back then, in the year 2000, because we dug ourselves out of a pretty big hole, and the only reason we dug ourselves out of that hole is because of Ryan's leadership. Now, the Lutheran, the ELCA, in the comments that Ryan was making about what the ELC faces is a big numbers issue because in the '70s, that was the crest of the wave of the ELCA. In the 1970s, the ELCA reached 5.7 million members across the United States. By the year 2015, that number was down to 3.6 million, but the big curve didn't start coming down until the year 2000 is where the curve, the knee of the curve started in losing members of the ELC congregations. The ELCA at that time started thinking about, how do we stop this turnaround? How do we make the congregations grow? Because there are some things in the ELCA that mitigate or rule against trying to grow the congregation because of the way the United States populations are set up. So they have put out a study, and I'll step out of the light a minute, and then get right back in. They have put out a study that's dated July the 25th, 2016, and in this, this is where what Ryan was talking about, is the primal scream of the ELCA saying, "We do not know yet exactly what to do. We are dependent upon you congregations to help bring the ELCA back and stop that deterioration because we're facing some fairly significant issues in the growth of the population of the United States." So let me have the first slide. Okay, this is a slide that I want to introduce because it's important. It says, "The discussion we're having this morning is a direct result of Ascension's strategic plan." It's extremely important because in that ELC study, one of the things they constantly talk about is, if you don't have a plan to go forth in your church, you probably are going to slowly fail because, as I'll show you in a minute, the next years are critical to us. So, under the leadership of Kurt Barker, we worked with Kurt and Ryan to build a strategic plan. It's only one page long, and it talks about what we need to do in this church to continue on. I'm here today because of what's in this plan, because it talks about, a part of it is, what options have we got in this church to move forward? So with that, let me introduce the options. Now, I gotta get another technology gadget out. Okay, here we go. Let's talk about option one. There's three options. Let's talk about option one. Option one says that we should refurbish this church and continue to live in it for the next 15 years. And when I put that up there, there's two questions that probably come to your mind. First off, why 15 years? And the second one is, what do you mean by refurbish? So let me explain that. Again, why 15 years, and what do I mean by refurbish? When I look at this group right here, just looking at it, I would venture to say that a few of you are over 70, okay? One or two maybe hitting a little bit more than that. So how do you look at that? How do you study that problem? Well, you go to the insurance companies, and you say, "Insurance companies, how do you look at lifespans of people?" The actuarial tables, this is an actual actuarial table, Daryl Alsyc was gracious enough to get it for us. Look what it says. Along this axis is the exact age of an individual. This is built for a male nonsmoker. Women would be just slightly above that curve, but notice what it says. When you're born, you've got about 76 years of life expectancy statistically. Now you come down the curve and you age. 25 years, you've still got about 75, 76 years. When you get to 50, now you've got 80 years left. And when you get to 75, hmm, about 82 years, somewhere in there, and then as you go down the curve, it slows down to where you're closing at 90 years, you've got about four. Now, that's statistically information. Obviously, there's others that move on either side of that curve. But we in the ELCA are here, not just Ascension, we're looking across the ELCA. You're primarily sitting in these numbers, and that's what's got the ELCA very, very concerned. It's obviously what's concerning us, it's obviously what the council has been working with to say, "Okay, given that, where do we go from here?" So we said, "Okay, we ought to at least make sure we can get through 15 years, and we're gonna have to give it to somebody else to worry about." That's basically what that says, okay? So, that says where the 15 years comes from, but now let's talk about refurbishment. If you talk about refurbishing this building, and we've been through one fairly significant refurbishment already in the last 20 years, but we're looking at needing another, what are the goals for that? And we look, what goals would we have? Well, obviously, we'd better reduce fixed cost. Today, with water, electricity, gas, and the landscape maintenance, we burn $50,000, just to keep those operational, and that never goes away. That's what happened to us in the early part of this century. We still had those expenses, but we didn't have the revenues, and so we faded away, and we started to close the church. Those do not go away, so we've got to get them down some way. The next one was, whoops, sorry. "We want to address the congregation's most desired things that they want to have done to this church." And then the third thing was, "Let's do it without taking on any additional debt." How do we do that? So, we brought a construction company in, we used Ryan, we used Tom, because Tom knows everything about this church. We used another member of the congregation who is a builder. So we asked, "What do we need to do to this church to refurbish it to almost like new condition? These are the items that you would do to that to make it almost a new church." But when you look at that and you start pricing it out, the numbers become quite high. So we had to say, "Well, listen, what's mandatory? What have we really, no kidding, got to do, and what are nice to have?" So we drew that line right below windows, and I'll come back to that in just a minute because we could have easily drawn it right above windows. I'm talking about the windows around the church. What do we do with those? Because there's an issue with them, and I'll show you that in just a second. Okay, this is what I'm looking about, talking about old windows. If you look at that, these windows haven't been touched since the church was built in the 1960s, and as a result of that, we're seeing a fairly serious amount of deterioration. You can see all the paint's cracking away, all the glazing is cracking away, and the paint is totally gone. There is no protection for, these are metal frames by that paint. Another shot of it, and you can see it's getting bad enough now where it's starting to eat into the metal, and this is just a very small microcosm of a number of problems throughout all of those windows. If you fix it, it looks like this. We fixed one pane so we could get an idea of what it cost to go in and fix a pane, take it out, put it back, paint the frame, put it back in, reglaze it. That gave us the cost of one window, and then that could help us figure out what it cost for all windows. So we felt that that was important if we're going out another 15 years. So we finally settled on, from a council standpoint, we want to touch these items, these four items, which were above that line, but notice I added one. And the one we added was to back bury the current mortgage, and I'll show you why in just a minute. So the next task was to do, well, how much would this cost? Ideally, what you would like to do is bring in formal contractors. You would like them to look at it, you would like them to give you a formal quotable bid that they would live up to, but that takes money. So we've asked people to give us ideas, rough orders of magnitude, what these kinds of ideas or work would cost, and let me show you what that is. We want to remodel the downstairs bathrooms. You've all been down there. They're a little shabby. You know, they look like a hotel on the back streets of New York. So we want to remodel that. Well, we couldn't bring a contractor in to say, give us a firm quote for doing exactly what we need to do, but we did have contractors and people who have done this work tell us, "Well, how much is it per square foot? What do you normally cost per square foot when you want to do a new bathroom?" And that number was anywhere from $100 a square foot to $150 a square foot. $150 a square foot being a Taj Mahal, a Ritz-Carlton-type restroom, and then they come down from there to $100 a square foot. The bathroom downstairs are 639 square feet. Reason I know that is I've measured it. So 639 square feet at $150 is what this shows, you've got a maximum of about $100,000. What do we do to build an upstairs restroom? Now, here's the great story about that. For a long time, all we heard was, "Put an elevator upstairs to go downstairs so we don't have to ride the electric chair." Build a elevator upstairs. The question was, where? Where would you put an elevator upstairs here such it could get downstairs? And everybody comes up with their idea. "Well, you could put it in Jane's office, you could put it over on that stairwell, you could put it out here," but nobody really knew, they were just taking a whag at it. Because you look and say, "Well, there's a lot of square footage here somewhere to go." So we brought Otis Elevator out. We brought their wizard out and said, "Okay, tell us where to put an elevator." Down the basement we went. We spent one morning walking through it, trying to figure out, "Where would you put an elevator?" Well, the answer is to that is you build it in Ryan's current office, okay? Because Ryan's office is outside of the foundation walls. So the foundation structure of the church is a very thick concrete wall all the way around the perimeter of the church, and we have to then go into Ryan's office, cut the hole, dig down quite a ways, put the elevator in, build the shaft, and then we have to cut a hole in the foundation, and that just got to be a bridge too far because it didn't make really any sense because by the time you got stairs downstairs, it's taken as much time as riding the chair to go down because you're right there at the restroom. So we passed on that idea. Then we said, "Well, wait a minute, if we're gonna put a restroom, or a downstairs elevator in Ryan's office, let's just take Ryan's office and make it an upstairs restroom." So we brought an architect out, and we said, "Can you draw us a restroom layout that would be in Ryan's office?" Sure, and they did. And, you know, when you're doing this, you're kind of begging them to do this, and they did it for us. And they said, "Okay, here's what it would look like, and you sure enough, you could put a men's stall and a women's stall and a wash basin in the right space and all the ADA requirements, you can get it in Ryan's office." So how much does that cost? Again, we go by just square footage as to what's possible, and it comes out to about $75,000 to build a restroom in Ryan's office, but then you say, "Well, wait a minute, I just threw Ryan out of his office, so now I gotta find a place for Ryan." So now we came up with the idea and asked the architect, "Where would we put Ryan?" And the thing is to just duplicate that office on that patio, and that's what we settled to do. That's the only real place you can do it. We don't want to go back in the basement. That's where the pastor actually started out. We don't want to go back into the basement, we'll move it outside, and it will cost about $75,000. It's doable to put a restroom outside. So we solved that issue and came up with a solution to those problems. The next was repair the windows. And to make a long story short, when we started this estimate, we asked them to put dual pane, dual pane glass in the windows. So the estimate that they gave us was for dual pane glass, which is quite expensive, and I'll tell you why we decided not to go there in a minute. But dual pane glass for the windows was at above $250,000 cost, and we said, "That's a bridge too far because of the next item. We want to install a solar power system, generate the power to run this church by solar power." So we called out a solar power company. So we called out a solar power company, came out, surveyed the power usage, what it looked like for the future, and they gave us a hard estimate, written hard estimate for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and some cents. The solar power would be on a car shade on the parking lot, and it would cover it. And it would generate about eighty-five percent of the power we need for this church. And it was at two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. There was at the time, an alternate way to fund that, because we could get someone else to buy the solar panels, and then we would pay that usage for about five years, and then they would give it to us because of some serious tax consequences in paying for a solar panel system. So it was a good idea to do, but it really cut down our use and need for electricity from our local power company. And then finally bury the mortgage. Our current mortgage is sitting at around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We want to take that down, because that's forty-two hundred dollars a month we spend for that mortgage. And if we can cut that down to something less than that, we can use that money for the things we need to do in the community. And that's what our goal is, is to do things with this church that meet our guiding principles, that goes out into the community and does that work. So that's option one. Now we go to option two, which is a whole different way to do it. And that is build a new church on this facility and demolish this church. And that way, we can go into the future with a small, smart, beautiful new church that would set us up for the indefinite future and be able to meet the needs of the people who are following us and the kinds of people that are following us. Okay, to do option two, we would not upgrade anything in this church. And then we would build, and right now, just as a sketch, and an idea in looking at how these new churches are built, it would be three buildings, each one two thousand square feet, total of six thousand square feet. And dealing with contractors that build churches, they say you can build a gorgeous church for two hundred dollars a square foot. So for six thousand square feet of a new church, at that cost, it would be one point two million. Construction fees are typically ten percent of the cost of the construction. That adds a hundred and twenty thousand. And you look at the building demolition to bring this church down, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. And we have a hard estimate for that, not a hard estimate, a hard quote for that, but it has some age to it. So we just inflated it another fifty thousand and said it'll take about three hundred thousand. That number is a little soft, but it's in the ballgame. Landscaping, we've got to revoice the organ, we've got to take that with us. We've got to do a new landscaping system, and there'll be, as you know, a lot of miscellaneous things. Now I talked previously about the solar system. We know right now to build a solar system, it would be done for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, rounded off at two fifty. But that's for ten thousand square feet, two floors. We obviously don't need that much power from a solar system with a much, much smaller church, which could be divvied up to three separate buildings and even have the air conditioning all at one time. Okay, so maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. But I didn't put that up there, because I literally don't know yet from the company that gave us a hard quote for this, what it would do for that. And then bury the mortgage, same number, three fifty. So that says, we would need a total capital requirement for option two of two point three million. It's not a small number, let me tell you where that's, how we come up with it. First off, you're gonna take everything you can from this church. Probably not the pews, but maybe the pew wood. Maybe the pews, but we don't know. That's gonna all be decided. We'd obviously take the pyramids, because we're not about to let those pyramids get away from us, because they're a major part of our church. And of course, we would take the video recorders and several other things that we will figure out that when we come down to that kind of a problem. Now Ryan wants to be able to have the ability to do two to three services every Sunday with the capability to do one service on Saturday night. You can't do that in this building. That would be impossible, because you'd have five people, ten, fifteen here, and then it would lose its ability to be a spiritual event. You're just setting it as a large room. So we said, with the smaller buildings, we could go to multiple services. And we know from the study that the ELCA did, the young people coming behind us, that's what they like, because families today have all kinds of requirements in their families and need different times of worship to be able to come to church. But when you have one fixed service in one facility, it tends to drive away that type of person that needs that other time. I guess we've had a lot of numbers of times that we've had two services in this church, a morning, early morning service and the current service that we have now. The early service would always kind of filter away, because it was a very small number of people. And when you have a small number of people in this big auditorium to sing, tough thing. And so it tends to filter away, and we've gotten down to where we only have one service. Okay, now, if you look at it from this standpoint, actually, you look around where we live, this is kind of like building one of these mansions right here in Paradise Valley, setting in a zerg escape-type environment and be able to have a traditional congregational ministry. It would certainly drop our water costs to do that. We would keep the garden, and we would have to obviously move the columbarium. But it's capable, we have six acres here that we can do that. Now that gives us a way to possibly help fund this particular option. One of our plans that we looked at was to sell two acres of the current church. Those two acres would be back here, where you see that wall, we would sell two acres that sit back there that are now used for absolutely nothing but gravel or storage of dirt. However, and let me back up. We have a firm estimate, a firm bid for that land for one point, or for seven hundred thousand dollars for each acre. So if we sold those, we can pretty well be sure we will get at least one point four million for that land. Now against the two point three million that I showed you on the total, if you can get one point four from that, you've only got to raise about nine hundred thousand. And that would require that capital funding. So that's option two. Now let's go to option three, because this is the one that's no cost. Option three will be no cost. Option three says, sell the church to a developer and go build a church just like you want, exactly like you want, somewhere else in Scottsdale. Now, Ascension is really meant to be the church from McCormick Ranch area, okay? So you want to kind of stay in that area. So that even constricts us a little further for a new church if you were building it from scratch. But look what you generate when you sell this property. Seven hundred thousand dollars per acre, six acres, you're getting four million at least. And you may be able to get slightly more, because this is extremely valuable property. With four and a half to five million dollars, you can close out the mortgage, walk away, build whatever kind of church you want, and be able to go into the future probably with still money in the bank. So it's a no-cost option to do that. But there's a catch. The problem is, there's no acreage in Scottsdale, and there's no acreage around us. And we were negotiating it some time ago for a piece of property that's right on the Scottsdale Road, right where the golf course is. Three acres, or four acres of land, perfect place to build a church. So we started to try to option that and worked on it, and worked on it. But they wanted four million, and we couldn't make that pencil at four million. So I said, we gotta wait. And we gotta go through this kind of briefing to get the church to agree that, well, okay, we could do that, but we have to do that. And so while we were trying to work it out, get the buyer or the seller down to a, we hoped a number around two million, we could get that property. But that fell through. When we were working it, the property just sold for one and a half billion. So we lost it. But that closes us out for that type of property. So we've got to look elsewhere. And right now, we're just gonna have to sit and wait and look. If we're going to go with that option, we would have to continually look, what kind of property is available for us to do option three? Okay, so let's review the options. Option one is refurbish the church, say where we are for at least fifteen years. Option two is to build a new church here and demolish this church. Option three is to sell this property, walk away and, excuse me, build a new church in another location somewhere in Scottsdale to all the specifications we desire and still have money in the bank. So let me get off the stage right quick. National religion trends that you see, we've talked about, Ryan's talked about, all through this study from the ELCA says, the ELC congregations across America are gonna decrease. Birth rates are down, the congregation, ELCA Church Congregation. The interesting statistic, currently, America is about sixty-five percent white. The ELCA is ninety-five percent white. Okay, so it is not diverse. That's one of its problems. Second, the millennials that are coming along and the people that are coming behind us, they are, they have a faith. They do believe in Christianity. They believe the church is good. It stands for good, and it represents what's good. What they don't believe in and don't want a part of is the traditional rappings of these types of churches. So it's going to be very difficult to ever bring them through the doors of this kind of church. So we've got to come up with better ideas. Now, one of the tasks in the plan I talked about, in the strategic plan, is to develop a marketing plan that tells us and looks at, how do we go after this kind of an individual? How do we look out and see, how do we touch individuals out there who we would like to bring into our church? Again, Kurt Barker and Don Jeffers have taken on the task, because they have professional marketing backgrounds, to help lead us through that kind of an exercise so that we have some way to look forward. Because as you look out for fifteen years, remember, since two thousand that I talked about to now is only sixteen. And I can't tell you, Dick, you'll know how many have changed, and several of you who were with the church at that time know how much this church has changed in that time. Now consider that change, but all of these faces start to drift out of it. What replaces that? So the leadership is focused on rightsizing its real estate so we can face those problems. Ascension's decisions are needed now so that we can figure out how to go forward. And Ascension's response will determine what future our church has in the community. And with that, I'll get off the stage and turn it back to Ryan.
I don't know if you can even imagine how much time the council and staff have invested in trying to figure out all of these permutations. They come to our congregation. This conversation will be unfolding over the coming months. They come without a council recommendation, so the council is not proposing one way or the other. These aren't even meant to be completely exhaustive in their understanding of how we... But we wanted to get the grist out into the mill so that we have all of us something to chew on. You know, we are deeply committed to there not being secret information at Ascension, so we wanted a public gathering where we're able to kind of share all of the various permutations that are before us. So I wonder, yes, if you would thank Mac. Don is also here from council. Kurt, who has been holding my hand as we worked through strategic planning. Jim, who sat with us with contractors and architects. I wonder if you would just help me to thank them for the unbelievable amount of work that they have invested in doing this. When I first came to Ascension, I would make the rounds, and I would ask sister congregations, so do you guys want to merge? Would you guys? And they'd always say to me, well, we're set up for the long term in our facilities and size of congregation and everything. Ryan, you should have them sell Ascension and just distribute the proceeds among the congregations. You guys could endow ministry on the territory till Jesus comes home with the sale of this property. And if I didn't think there was something special about this congregation, maybe that's exactly what I would recommend we do. But I think there is something very special about who we are and how Jesus has called us to be that is worth preserving for the long term, worth preparing for worst-case scenarios, and worth working towards best-case scenarios. You might not think so, but I suspect if you are among those who have hung with us through thick and thin, that you too think there might be something special about what Jesus does through this congregation. So thank you for being a part of this congregation and this conversation. You can see now, as our congregation kind of picks an option and says, this is sort of the direction we think we should head. If, you know, if the dub window finally collapses on Deacon Jane and me and the assisting ministers, because I have a little cup in my office with all of the shards of the window. Yeah, Molly's laughing, because we always, if you see us, we don't genuflect like Roman Catholics at this church. We're picking up glass from the floor, because the Lord's got a big mortar and pestle right above us. We would know that we are not going to try to fundraise a hundred thousand dollars to replace that window if we can't say that we're gonna be in this place forever. When this cross is incredibly delicate, we had someone come out, and they said that'll be a hundred thousand dollars to replace that cross, because it's so fragile. So then again, if we're gonna spend that money, we better make sure that we are all on the same page about what the future of this congregation is gonna look like. So I don't want us to be in the kind of situation where I say, I want your money, and I pour it into a building, and then twenty years from now, I'm the last one walking out, turning off the lights. That would be a terrible abuse of the trust that we have between us. So, thank you. Where, well, are there questions of clarification about the options? We're not so much looking for straw polls or opinions. The time will come for that. But does anybody have any pressing? Dr. Jane? So a sanctuary, a hall, and then offices, classrooms, that kind of thing. If that makes sense. Beth? Yep. Yeah. So Jeff Edmonds, who is a good neighbor of ours, has optioned that. He hasn't actually purchased it. He's got the option on it for one point five to build these smaller properties. There was a big article in it, in The Independent, and the article, the writer of the article was very pessimistic about the possibilities, and the mayor pretty much came out against it. So I don't know. I don't know what happens. But if Adie and I mortgage our lives to purchase something for one point five million, then you'll know what. then you'll know what happened. Yeah. Keep us in mind, yeah, if things, if you need conversation. Jeff, if you need some prayers, I'd love to be your shoulder to cry on, right? I'm sorry. But again, I don't own this land. The Senate doesn't own this land. You, as a congregation, own this land in Jesus' name. Doc? Yeah, that number does not take into consideration the steel salvage. That is true. And I haven't the foggiest what that would come out to be. If, what the salvage value would be of the steel. Was, when they researched it back in two-thousand or whatever, it was more modest, yeah. Suzanne? Yeah, you know me, and I've said to several groups before, if you want us to be doing ministry with young families, it's not a, you know, it's not a mystery about how you do that. Just, you know, we build a school and fit ministry into their lives rather than asking them to fit church into their lives. That certainly is a possibility. And if you remember when Taliesin came out and tried to propose that three-point-five-million big expansion, the majority of that was, well, maybe half of that basically was a preschool to get us into that. Pastor Les? Yes. Possibly, yes, possibly. That we need to continue to be looking into ways ELCA congregations in particular have been able to buck the demographic trends. That is important research, absolutely. Yes, possibly. Yeah, could be. It could be, most definitely. We might be the exception to what is happening. What has always been challenging for me, because one of the great models for congregational growth, like New Song Lutheran Church up in Vegas at Anthem Vegas, they're doing fantastically, but they are that community's church. There is no other, there's no competition. They don't have Presbyterians and Episcopalians and progressive Roman Catholics right next door to them. So there are examples of people who are able to get everyone in the community because there are no other franchises. We're always, we have the challenge that every denomination has a franchise, or two, right next door to us. And so our cross-shopping, so to speak, is challenging, but not impossible. But remember, I know Pastor Broughton, before he passed away, said to me that Pastor Baumgartner was just absolutely certain that if this church were built here, that he would get well-off Midwesterners joining the congregation. It's true, there were well-off people. He just didn't realize that many of them would be joining what becomes Temple Solel instead of Ascension Lutheran Church. You know, that was a surprise. So it would be bad for us to be like the salesman who pins all of our hopes on one big sale. It could be dangerous. Okay? I don't know anything about that. You mean like a hundred-year lease on land? I don't know anything about that. So there is, I'm ignorant of what that option would look like. I know you'll have lots more questions. Feel free to email us, to call us. Again, this does not come with a recommendation attached to it. This is meant to make sure that we all have kind of the same information for our conversation going forward, okay? Let's pray. So gracious God, you have walked with the people of Jesus through many lands and many times, and you never fail to conspire to bring good news to every time and place. We know that if Christ Jesus is King, that indeed, that mission is still safe. We pray that you would inspire our congregation to understand the ways that we can be a part of what you are up to in the world and to faithfully wager how we can best do that together. Be with us as we talk and imagine and desperately try to listen to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, everyone, for coming to two services today.